And Alder Vahili is unexcused and Alder Carter is not here, but other than I think so, we all of us is here and we have a quorum. So we'll start the, can we Karen Kurus start with the roll call please?
Oops, yes, okay. President Abbas.
Present.
Vice President Martin.
Here.
Alder Lemmer.
Here.
Alder Bennett. Alder Vahili is excused. Alder Heck.
Here.
And Alder Harrington McKinney?
Here.
And you said Alder Carter is excused? Is that correct?
She's not here, I'm not sure if she's excused or not.
Oh, okay, alright. You have quorum.
Thank you very much. ID Stefan Atanya, could you please? Yep.
Alright, welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members of the committee, if you're able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you're able, please activate your video when you're speaking. In this meeting, panelists have the ability to mute and un-mute themselves. Panelists also have the ability to add pronouns after the names if they choose. Please do not alter your current naming convention, simply add text after your name. Please use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Staff, please use the raise hand feature when you're asked a question. The chair will do their best to call in committee members in the order which hands are raised. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. There are no members of the public registered to speak, so President Abbas, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Next is approval of the minute, we need a motion.
So moved.
Oh, seconded.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, I couldn't get to my mute button, my unmute button.
Alright, motion is moved and seconded. Any questions about the minutes? If I don't see any hand raised, I will consider this as a unanimous vote. Thank you very much. Next is public comment. Stefan, there is nobody registered for a public comment.
Correct.
Alright, thank you very much. Next is disclosures and recusal. Any member of the committee want to disclose or refuse? I do not see any hand raised, thank you. Next is agenda item number two, file number 65269, establishing the President Work Group on Visual Justice, Anti-Racism and Equity. We need a motion.
Is the motion to establish, a move establishment?
Yep, adopt.
Adopt.
I need a second.
A second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on the motion? Aldo Fermin.
Thank you, President. I'm curious about this one and the other committees, I'll sort of make my questions kind of related to both. What is the timeline for both of these committees to get started?
So the timeline is, we will try to start as soon as possible. We are also heading in a process of Lisa's position. So at the moment, this particular work group, anti-racism, as well as environmental justice, will be staffed by common council. So, once this is approved by common council, there will be a doodle poll with the council members and we will schedule sometime. Did I answer the question?
Yeah, that definitely helps. I mean, I guess my concern or question would be about councils' staffing resources and how that works. I mean, I don't think, you know, I've only been on the council for a little over two years. We've never had this many committees or, you know, that the council's office is staffing and we're also, you know, down two members. And so I was wondering, you know, staffing wise, how is that all working out?
Yeah, so I, a couple of weeks ago, Aldo Fermin, I sent an email from council leadership about some of the staffing situation. Chief of Staff is, the work group is established and Debbie's working on scheduling time with the members of the work group regarding these particular other work groups. As I mentioned, we finished the interview process, that's very good news for everyone with the legislative analyst position. And very soon, we're in a process of doing background check and very soon, we're gonna propose an offer and bring it to CCEC. So at least we will be back by next month, earlier next month, back to three staff rather than two, which will be helpful. Another step council leadership took is looking into an internship option. And this time, we're gonna do an internship to really give knowledge back about public policy to the intern, but also have some sort of, get some help at the same time. That internship program also we are planning to have in upcoming years as well. So the chief of staff is the only one which is taking longer time, which is understandable because there's a lot of things to be discussed. Other than that, we are working really hard to manage the workload.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you very much for expressing your concerns. We share the similar concerns about the workload and leadership is working collaboratively with the staff to sort of those things. I would like to do a small amendment to the motion. I would like to add Alder Charles Mayadze to the anti-racism work group. If there's a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion of addition of another member to this work group? I see no hand raised, so that is approved. Now we are back to the main motion. Any discussion? Yes.
Just to jump in really fast, my apologies, Mr. President. Can we have someone send the meeting link to Alder Bennett? She can't find it, I just got a message from her, so.
Yeah, I'll send that right away.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for letting us know. So, back to the main motion, any discussion? I see none. I will consider as motion approved unanimously. If there's any objection, please raise your hand. Okay, no objection, it's approved. Moving next to, I can put out my agenda item. Sorry, apologies for that, I have opened too many windows, story of my life. There we go. Agenda item number three, file number 6527 for establishing the President Work Group on Environmental Justice. Then we have a motion.
Move adoption. Second.
Thank you. Motion is moved and adopted, open for discussion. I don't see any hand raised. If there's, if there's any objection, please raise your hand, otherwise I will consider as a unanimously approved. Motion is approved. Thank you very much. Moving forward to file number, agenda item number four, 63170, repealing section 33.091 of the Madison General Ordinance to eliminate the City County Liaison Committee. We need a motion.
Move adoption.
We need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Aldo Fermin.
Um, can, can somebody explain what's changed and why this is on the agenda? I know this was something that was discussed a few months ago. And there were all sorts of legal things trying to be figured out, but I'm, I'm, I was surprised personally that it was back on the agenda. I'm not sure what, if anything, has changed. And actually, it's also being sponsored by somebody who's no longer an alder, so I don't know if it has a sponsor. So if, if staff or somebody can help with that, that'd be great.
Attorney Hess.
Yes.
Could you, do you want to answer that?
Well, I mean, I assume that the president put it on the agenda and so it's up to the committee whether it wants to make a recommendation to the council. Was there a different question?
No, so Aldo Fermin asked, but my memory served me well, there was a question for, for us to see, either we want to keep this on the committee or do we want, don't we not want to keep this as a committee? I know you expressed some of the concerns last time about what could be the mechanism to talk between the, between the building-related issues, but at the same time, what my understanding was, the staff thought they could have discussion with the council leadership as well as with the, with the administration internally about the city issue. Other than that, that particular committee does not have any specific connection with community. So that's the reason it came back to decide, do we want to continue or do we want to just goodbye this particular committee?
Okay, thank, thank you, President Abbas. Then, and then I'm gonna be a little bit more specific. Attorney Hess, has anything changed with the legal obligations between the, the city and the county with reference to how the building is managed and how it's managed through this committee? Is there any update on anything that has been done in that?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I'm, I have some more comments, but I'll let people ask questions, so, thank you.
Aldo McKinney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Attorney Hess, could you specifically say the duties and responsibilities for this liaison committee, so we're clear about whether we're gonna make a decision to hold it intact or pass it on?
Sure, let me just get the ordinance here. You know, shorthand, I was just in a meeting, I don't know, this week or last week where it was explained to me that this is essentially the landlord committee for the building itself to work out any issues. But as many of you probably know, it hasn't really met actively. I guess there was an issue related to whether or not there should be dogs allowed in the building. I think there was maybe another issue that came up, but it seems to be fairly dormant. I'm just looking for the actual description of its duties. One second. Okay, it's, it's just one paragraph. It says, "The committee is hereby created to maintain a relationship, relationship between the council and the Dane County Board for the purposes of confering on matters of mutual interest and to provide a forum to resolve matters where there may be a difference in interest between the city and the county. City representation on the committee is the mayor or the mayor's designee and three council members appointed by the mayor and convened by the council."
And so my follow-up question is, is that I heard that it's been basically building-related, and I'm not really sure, but from the broad description of what was just read, it said issues that might concern both the city and the, and the county. And so, and I don't know what those issues are. We just came out of, out of COVID and we're now moving back into eventually full capacity. Would there be instances that we would have to consult together to make determinations? I don't know. And the reason that I'm raising the question is, is that if we disband the committee and find that there is a need for it, and then we're faced with something else, and so that's my question that I would pose, is there, would there be any issues that we might, and even though the committee has been dormant for a period of time, we're just coming out of an unprecedented, we, we don't know what the norm will be. And so is there any thought that in coming out of what the new norm would be, would there be instances that the city, the county board and the, the council would need to, to be in communication?
Well, I think just, I mean, the nature of your question kind of points to, I mean, how unpredictable the answer might be. You know, I guess I would maybe try to reflect on what policy issues the city council and the county board would have weighed in on, in the past, related to the building, if there's been anything that, you know, that comes to, to the council related to management of the building. There's gonna be decisions made by the county about when the building reopens, there's gonna be decisions made about whether masks are required by the public, when the public's in the building, or, you know, and certainly city staff and in our offices, but I'm not sure if those are really decisions that the council would get involved in. Typically, you know, the building, it's up to the county to decide when the building opens up and what the rules are gonna be in the common areas of the building. You know, whether this committee would be called on to weigh in or would want to weigh in, I, you know, I can't really predict that. Just incidentally, Karen reminded me that this was apparently referred by the council to CCEC, so that's why it was generated to be on this agenda.
Any other further question? Aldo McKinney?
Thank you, I'm complete.
Thank you. Aldo Carter?
Yes, thank you. I served on this committee and I think this committee is important when it is part of the process. What we have found recently is things that has to do with the building has bypassed this committee, which in effect makes this committee ineffective. So the last thing that everyone remembers is the whole dog issue. But even before the dog issue, there was a situation where we had had houseless people camping on the patio. And what I'm calling the patio is the green space in front of the building. And then it spread to in front of the doors. Then we issued a, an ask that they vacate in front of the doors by seven o'clock, but it kept growing bigger and bigger. It came to this committee and we eventually had to disallow people camping on the grounds. So I think now we have an issue of security in room 201. And many of you might think, well, we don't need security. Well, you need security when something happens and you need security and we don't have a way to get out and we don't have any way to push a panic button or anything like that. So, security is one of the things that we are discussing now, Dane County's discussing about the building. I think that this committee is effective when it's part of the process, but lately it has not been part of the process. So I think that's, that's the decision we have to make today, is either how do we get it part of the, the line of communication? And if we don't, can we ensure that our chief of staff, the mayor's chief of staff and Dane County's supervising board chief of staff at least meet so they can communicate with us whatever decisions are made with the building? And I think that's the issue. Thank you.
Thanks, Aldo Carter. Aldo Heck.
Thank you, President Abbas. If we're still in questions for staff, I have a question for Attorney Hess. I'd like to know if we actually can take up this item when it has no sponsor?
Well, I think if the council wants to act on this resolution, by the time it gets to the council, you would need to have a sponsor for it, or you would need to have somebody, I mean, it's been moved, this, this item has been moved. And so if this committee wants to recommend that the council adopt it, then it's gonna have to have a sponsor attached to it. If this committee does not want to recommend the council adopt it, I mean, I don't know that there's any, there's, there's any firm rule about, well, let me put it this way, I guess the default rule is that when you lose a sponsor, you don't have an item to act upon. If, you know, the council turns over and that individual is no longer, there's only one sponsor and that sponsor is no longer on the council, there's nobody to carry it forward. So if this, if this committee wants to recommend approval, I think that would also require that somebody be added as a sponsor.
Okay, so that, that would be true for any committee then? Committees could take up items that didn't have a sponsor as long as once they made a recommendation or not, that it had a sponsor?
Right, and I mean, the fact that this was referred by the, by the council, I mean, the council directed this committee to take a look at it, so so in theory then, the council was, was expecting a, a report back from CCEC.
Okay, honestly, it sounds a little suspicious to me, but that, that answers my question, thank you.
And, and I'm sorry, I don't have a more firm answer because I didn't really, it wasn't really brought to my attention to consider, you know, what, what happens with an item that only has one sponsor who's no longer on the council. So that's the best I can come up with on the spot.
Thank you, that's my question.
President Abbas, can I just interrupt for two seconds on procedure? Normally, what would have happened is that the council office would have noticed that this alder is no longer, did not come back, right? And they would have asked if anyone wanted to sponsor this so that we could talk about it and act on it tonight. And since that didn't happen, I think that we should be referring this until we get a sponsor for it, if we get a sponsor for it. That's just my 25 cents due to inflation.
Thank you, Aldo Carter. Aldo, Aldo Martin, Vice President Martin.
Thank you. I noticed that, that this was supposed to be, to come here after we have developed processes to represent city and county interests with the city attorney's office and the Dane County Corporation Council. I just wanna thank Aldo Fermin for pointing that out. So I'm wondering if it is more appropriate, can we move to re-refer this to a few, a future meeting after this has been worked out with the city attorney's office and the county corporation council?
Do you want to do that motion?
We would still need a sponsor, folks.
Attorney Hess, do you want to chime in? Aldo Carter, if you.
I, you would still need a sponsor, so if, if it's okay with the group, I will sponsor this so it can move on. Thank you, Aldo Martin.
Aldo Martin, do you have a, is that a motion?
Yeah, if, if it's in order. I need to brush up on my Robert's rules. To re-refer to a future meeting after a plan has been made between the city, the city attorney's office as well as the Dane County Corporation Council.
Perfect, and second, Aldo Carter, that's your second, I believe? Correct. Perfect, move and second. Aldo McKinney, your hand is raised.
I had raised my hand to, to be that sponsor and my, and my question is, is that it named the two corporate sponsors and there was a discussion about the, the chief of staff's input. So can we go back to a question or is a question in order? And my question that asking Attorney Hess would be in order, does the chief of staff need to be a part of that, part of that decision-making discussion?
Well, can, can I get clarification on what the direction was from the council? Did that include the chief of staff being involved?
Aldo Martin, do you want to repeat your motion? One more time, please? You're muted.
I thought I clicked it. It was to re-refer this item to a future council meeting after a, a plan has been devised between the city attorney's office and the county corporation council to figure out how we will be proceeding without this committee, if it were to pass.
So, so to answer Aldo Harrington McKinney's question, then I, I don't think it's required that you have a chief of staff in place in order to proceed. It's certainly up to this body if, if you, you know, want to do that.
Aldo McKinney, do you have any more question for Attorney Hess?
Thank you for answering my question.
Thank you. Aldo, Aldo Fermin, do you have a question or comment?
No, I have a comment. I can wait if there are other questions.
I, I do not see any more hand raised, but Karen's hand is raised. Do you mind? We can get her input and then come on your comments. Thank you.
That'd be great.
Thanks, go ahead.
Just wanted to make sure I have this down correctly. Motion to re-refer to a future common council meeting or a future CCEC meeting?
CCEC.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Aldo Fermin, please go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. It would be my strong recommendation, or at least opinion, that CCEC should vote no for this referral. I think the, the better course of action would, would for there to be, for this to fail and for there to be a new motion that to place this on file without prejudice. I think there's way too much that needs to be figured out. I think if you folks refer this, what you're saying is you want this committee to disappear and you're directing staff to put in a bunch of time and work to figure out how this committee should disappear or what structure should be in place once this committee is gone. I was also a member of this committee, dealt with the dog issue, I don't wanna relitigate that, but I do think as a, as a council, we should not be in the, in the position of removing ourselves from, from management of that, the building. I think that committee has not been used as well as it could be and, and certainly there should be discussion about doing a better job there, but I don't think the solution is just saying, you know, go ahead to the administration, figure this out with. to the administration, figure this out with the county and alders don't want to be involved anymore. And if you look at the history, there have been some important decisions made by this committee. I think it's a terrible idea to get rid of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Aldo Furman. Aldo McKinney.
So what is in order? Because there's a motion before us to refer this. And when is a substitute in order? Because I absolutely agree with Alder Furman is that to be more viable in terms of decisions that we occupy that building as well. And so for decisions to be made with us, without us being at the table, makes me a bit uncomfortable. And yes, this committee has been dormant, but it has been dormant because we've not stepped up and say what we need to be a part of and what we should not. And so as we become, and so we've got a lot of committees that we have to be dealing with. But the essence of it is, is that when there's a decision based upon how this, how we'll be moving forward within the space that we can, we occupy, we should have a say-so in that matter. And it should not be considered, how do we eliminate it? How can we really be more vocal and more focused and involved in the decisions that might come before us in relationship to us occupying the space? So I guess let me just back up and say that when is that in order? Because there is a motion before us, but I want to put that substitute in, but I want to put it in the right order.
So Aldo McKinney, we have a main motion to dissolve. Then we have another motion to referral. That motion need to be done before we go back. And Attorney Haas, please chime in if I'm wrong before we go back and do a motion to put on a file without prejudice. So at this moment, there's a motion to refer. Aldo Martin.
Hi, I have to jump to an appointment, my apologies. But I am willing to, you know, rescind this if that's the will of the body and return to the original motion if that is what's called for, so.
I think so that will be in order. Thank you, Aldo Martin.
Thank you. I'll see you soon.
Thank you. Attorney Haas, if Aldo Martin rescind, take her motion back? And I think so that's.
So the second would also have to agree to rescind, withdraw the motion?
Aldo Lemmer?
Yes, I agree.
Karen, please go ahead.
Alder Carter seconded that second motion. So the first motion was to, the first motion was seconded by Lemmer. The second motion was seconded by Carter.
So we are right, Aldo Lemmer have to do the second, she did second.
Oh, of the rescinded motion or the main motion?
Aldo Carter, didn't Aldo Carter second the motion to refer?
She did, yes.
Okay.
Aldo Carter would need to withdraw that second.
I withdraw the second.
All right. Pretty good exercise for Robert Rule. So we are back on main motion. So we need a motion to put on a file.
So I move that we put this item on file without prejudice.
And we need.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is moved, it's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? I see none. And if you have any objection, please raise your hand. There's no hand raised, motion approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Next is again, I lost my agenda item, second time. All right. Next is agenda item number five, file number 65286, accepting the interim report of the passionate work group to review administrative procedure memorandum applicable to orders. We need a motion to accept the report.
I move to accept.
Give me the second.
A second.
Thank you. Alder Furman, do you want to speak on that or Aldo McKinney, one of you?
I think, well, I'd like to speak on it and I would invite Alder Furman. We both, there were three of us on that committee and we did not, and so this is me speaking, is that as we went through the items that referred to council members, we did a preliminary job because COVID happened and we did not meet. And so the reason that I am requesting that we take another look see, there's some items that have come up that we needed to address. And so I'm voting to accept the report as presented, but also at the time, once Alder Furman and those comments are made, is that we again take a look see at those APMs and especially the ones that involve Alder comment and input based upon how we treat each other and how we treat each other and also how we publicly, what's the word? How we publicly, how do we publicly treat each other in the media? And so I'd like to begin to look at that because there needs to be some standards related to that. There are no standards related to that. And we've had examples of where there needed to be a process and a standard and none was available and we need to really look at that.
Thank you. Aldo Furman.
Thank you, Council President. I think, so the purpose of this report really was to summarize what that committee had done. As Aldo McKinney had pointed out, you know, we weren't able to finish what was given to us due to COVID-19 and other priorities. You know, I think, to be quite honest, we really did try to in that committee, attack the easier things. And so that report makes it clear that we looked at all the different APMs that Attorney May had suggested would apply to us or possibly apply to us and give our opinion as a committee on that. And I think we left the really difficult stuff for further discussion and we just never got there. And that's a part of what Aldo McKinney had talked about, which is, you know, what is, what would be a harassment policy, for example? And then most importantly, how do you actually enforce something like that when we are elected officials? And how do you ensure something like that doesn't turn into a political process? You know, we had long discussions or started long discussions on, you know, what I might find offensive might not be the same thing somebody else finds offensive. And so now are we going to be putting the council in the position where we're censuring people on a regular basis because certain members think one thing is offensive and others don't? And it was a slippery slope that we weren't able to get to. So I'm hopeful after we accept, you know, this report that at some point, especially, you know, at a point where council staff has more bandwidth, that this committee be restarted and that we look at the APMs and try to figure out what the way forward, if any, is with the suggestions that this interim report makes as well as the stuff that we just didn't get to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Aldo Carter.
Oh, sorry. Can we, and this is a question for Attorney Haas. Can we accept the report? And can the president start a new work group with the charge of going forward with different continuation, but obviously with some new people included? That's just a question for staff.
Sure, but just to remind the body, you know, now the ordinances require that if the council is going to take any action recommended in a report, that that be stated separately. And accepting the report doesn't have any effect as to directing staff for the council. So there were some recommendations in this report about APMs that the council should adopt as recommended by the work group. So if CCC agrees with those, then I think the motion should be also to recommend that the council apply those APMs to their own conduct, the ones that have been noted in the interim report. Otherwise, the report will just be submitted and it will have no effect unless there's some additional action.
Yes, that's what I meant to go ahead and do the recommendations. But then another work group could be the same people. We'll start and look at the other issues that Alder Furman said and Aldo McKinney stated that they didn't get to.
Thank you, Aldo Carter. Aldo Bennett.
I, yeah, I, excuse me. I definitely feel and agree with some of the statements in there. And I think we do need to discuss further what it means and what exactly it means with how we treat each other and how we treat members of the public. And that was one of my main concern. The question is what exactly were like the details or understanding that the work group came to of those concerns? But it seems as though that hasn't come, we haven't come to a conclusion about that. So I, from what I understand, is there, so is the work group dissolved now? And then when we make, then if we make another work group to answer those questions, I think it would be prudent to also include that, what am I trying to say? These, those concerns should also really extend to all committees and not just be limited to council. But what, how are we conducting, how are committees themselves? You know, what is the conduct that is acceptable within committees? I hope that makes sense.
Aldo Bennett, is that a question or just a comment?
Comment and then, I mean, question is the work group dissolved now?
Attorney Haas.
Yes, okay. And I'm sorry, I don't understand. Are we able to make a motion to create another work group?
So Attorney Haas, correct me if I'm wrong. For this motion, if this is accepted, the work group is done, there are several recommendations. So if there could be a possibility, there would like other president work group, there could be a work group on implementation. But also I would like to hear from Aldo Furman more about it. My understanding is there are very specific recommendation in this report about taking what action and what action, no action is needed. As an example, 3-5 prohibited harassment have a recommendation is referral of this APM to CCEC in future process. I think so it could come without creating a work group to CCEC, some of those things. But again, I, we could still have an opportunity to create. If I, president work group, we don't need motion for that. I could, I could create that and bring to CCEC for approval or discussion. So if that is your question, I hope I answered that. All right. If you have no more question, I will go next to Aldo Furman.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to speak for myself and not the committee, but it would not be my recommendation that anything be done with this report other than as a reference. I think one of the things that we discovered as we were creating this final report is that some of the APMs had changed in the last year. And so my thought on how I proceeded with, you know, helping finalize this report was that this was intended to be a reference for whatever the next activity was. And I do think the next activity, you know, at least my two cents would be to reconstitute this group. We can't have the same people because Aldo Lemmer is no longer on the council. I think the mission of this committee should, if it's reconstituted, my suggestion would be that you keep it as is. I think whatever lessons you learn from this certainly could be applied to discussions about how committees operate, et cetera. But I think if you start opening it up to committees and start doing things other than how do the, very simply, how do the APMs apply to alders? I just think that that committee will probably not get its work done anytime soon. So my strong suggestion is that CCEC just accept this report. And then hopefully, you know, when President Abbas recognizes the council office has some more resources that this group be reconstituted and he select members for it with the same objective and then use this report as just reference to re-review the change to APMs and then decide some of those other very big philosophical question marks. Thank you.
Thank you, Aldo Furman. Aldo Heck.
Thank you, President Abbas. I wanted to clarify, do we have a motion on the table? To accept the report, is that the motion? Okay, I was going to offer that if it hadn't been made yet, but it has, so I have nothing to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Aldo Heck. Aldo Bennett, your hand is down. Do you want, we should speak? No? Okay. Well, the motion is made and there is a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Any objection to the motion? I see no hand raised, the motion is approved unanimously. Moving next to future agenda items, there is a list of future agenda item on CCEC. I will also want to open that opportunity for CCC members. If they wish to see or wish to add any agenda item in future meeting, please let council office know or let me know. We will happy to accommodate that. And on next CCC meeting is June 1st. And after June 1st, that is before common council meeting. And then one is on June 8th. That particular meeting, we have, that meeting will be, the mayor will be there giving her presentation. So we will share more information to all alder about that meeting. It's important for everyone, all the alders to attend and hear about some of the key issues around COVID and federal grant and other issues will be shared with all alders. So the purpose of that meeting beside this, because this particular meeting of CCC is very short. In one hour, it's very hard to achieve everything. So that particular meeting will give us more opportunity to have robust discussion and ask question around complicated topic or topic of interest. With that, any further discussion on future agenda item? If not, we need motion to adjourn. All right, Aldo Bennett, I believe that's your motion. Second. All right. All right, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.